Mayor Querham.
Here.
Councilmember Swanson, councilmember Mabry.
Here.
Gomez.
Here.
Newman.
Here.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll get started tonight on public comment. We've got, we'll go through, we have three items to go through. We've got Dennis Taylor from Taylor's Way to start it off. Just need your name, Dennis, for the record.
You need to speak loudly and clearly.
Dennis Taylor. Loudly and clearly.
Yeah, the mic's not on.
Alright. Thanks for having me, and wow, we got some rain. Trees love it. We all love it. Hey, I'm here to speak about the tree situation in Princeton and the surrounding communities, but we're concerned about Princeton at this point right now. They said the duration of August 10th, hundreds of trees were destroyed, had to be removed, completely removed, and caused damage to hundreds if not thousands more. And as I say, it complements the city of Princeton with the street crews getting things up and out quickly, quickly, quickly. I was in Ottawa today and there's still quite a lot of debris in streets, next to the streets. They've done a fantastic job, and then it's neat to see the neighbors helping the neighbors, and it was very neat to see that. And thank goodness, I don't believe anyone was really hurt. But the urban forest from the duration has just been beat up along with past storms, past tornadoes, and we're just not keeping up with the pace planting trees, which is not. We see these large trees being removed. There's large trees being removed from the past month. One tree's doing more for the environment than a hundred trees planted tomorrow's going to be doing in ten years. That one tree was doing more, and we've lost a lot of big trees. It's just crucial. And the need for planting is crucial at this time, and if we do it correctly, so we enhance the urban forest with the best possible future for the trees, we will get ahead of it. But as I said, we're losing our forests. If we do the overheads from ten years ago, five years ago, it's just less, and now it's going to be terrible in a few more months when they update it, or when they update it. So I've come here to actually propose an ordinance that will allow us to start planting trees on city property with restrictions. And with restrictions, I mean, an ordinance that has restrictions on sizes of the plants to sizes of the boulevards, I was going to say boulevards, sizes trees, sizes spread, size height, with utilities all in mind, and the best thing for the future of the trees. But everyone, I have a list here, I'll share with you. It's a partial ordinance, just for the city tree part of it, of city property. We're working on a large ordinance that is more of an entire city ordinance, it's going to be more toward a tree board. And skipping down to the bottom, I said, you know, public planning ordinance is what I want to, is what I would like to propose and get started on. And then develop an active tree board that's going to meet at least once a month. Establish a tree, complete tree ordinance, which we're in the process of. I know what Ospie worked on, and then a tree inventory. And that last and probably as much more important since anything is protecting our old, old trees, our landmark trees, our valuable trees, that are some, actually unnecessarily being removed. And in an ordinance, there's also a landmark trees preservation there, where we can have these trees registered as a landmark tree, and then it needs to have permission to be removed, worked on. It's just all part of this ordinance, that you apply for a tree to be planted, you apply for a tree to be worked on, in a public property. And then it's all, the trimming, the work for the trees is all done by ANSI standards, all done by the International Society of Arbiculture, so we're trimming trees correctly. We're getting trees done, we're dealing with the best health for the tree. And that's pretty much the long and short of it, what I have.
Is this an ordinance that you have grown up yourself, or is it something you grew on it from somewhere else, from another locality?
I actually took a lot of this from Ottawa. Ottawa took a lot of this from other communities, and they picked the best parts of this, that, and this. We did the same thing. Ottawa's done a fantastic job putting trees in, and...
On public properties.
On public properties. And they're landmark trees, they literally, you have to have that tree that's registered as a landmark tree, and it starts from the homeowner. It has to be treated correctly. It's just protecting, it's like protecting our own folks. We still throw them in nursing homes and say, "See you." Well, later we have. Haven't made a visit yet. But I don't know if there's any other questions.
Can you do that privately as well?
Can't.
This is just public?
Can I do it privately?
Private homes, trees, landmark trees.
Yeah.
How do you define it? Can you?
Again, it needs to come from, it's best coming from the homeowners. But there's a landmark tree at Oakwood Cemetery, it's a state record tree. That belongs to the city of Princeton? Yes.
Yeah.
But no, I'm not here to say I'm going to beat the Gestapo or tell you you've got to do with your trees. I don't mean that. Not whatsoever. I'll give you the best.
Oh, I thought I'd save them, just what you're saying, save the...
I want to save the trees.
Yeah?
Yeah. Save all the trees we can. And with this ordinance, there's tree selections, there's trees that aren't on the list of not to be planted on city property, public property. And one is going to be, I don't care if people do it on their own property, and it's called an autumn blaze maple. Everybody loves them, and they're notoriously weak, especially with what happened August 10th. It's unfolded. So I want, I've actually crossed that one off on a list that was approved through Ottawa, and I cross that one off because we don't need to have that. I'd really have a more strongly branch-structured tree, branch structure on a tree.
What kind, what's that tree?
Autumn blaze.
Autumn blaze.
Super popular tree. It's overpopulized, it's overpopular. There's much better trees with the same fall color and a better branch structure. Just things you want to look for.
Dennis, I could, so, you know, from Lehman's terms, we say public right-of-ways. So we've got basically from the sidewalk to the curb, in most instances, that's the city's domain. We don't put garage sale signs out there, realtor signs, that kind of stuff. That's one area you focus on.
Correct.
And then, and then we've got some boulevards, like Gossi Boulevard, places like that, that could certainly use more trees.
Absolutely. There's a lot out there that I'm not even aware of. And sometimes the city goes, some of these old properties, like on East Prue Street, I don't know how far the city is, but it's out there, that's just an individual, those are just old, old homes, I don't know how far that goes out. A lot of them are different, it's not just the sidewalk.
So you have a copy of what you have that you can leave?
How many would like that?
I'd like a copy.
Do you have one that I can make copies for?
Yeah, I have. You know what, I'll start with you, if you want to make copies.
So this is essentially something to get started with?
Correct. I procrastinated on this for two years, and I think, you know, the duration... You got it.
Thank you.
The duration kind of put me over the top. And when I honestly was seeing a few trees that I saw being removed that I didn't think should be removed, and it wasn't just myself. It just kind of gets you when you see an old, an old glory being taken down. And, I mean, it's like a fantastic tree right here in town with South Main is Mr. Nelson's front yard. And it's a monster too, the tree.
It made it through?
And it made it through. Unscathed, I believe. Trees that were trimmed properly and opened up, and taken care of, came through the storm pretty well. That's autumn blaze maples that needed some supports in them, and they had them in, and they came through really well. A tree's, a young tree's like a kid. You don't wait till they're teenagers to start discipling. It's just you've got to train them sooner. Any other questions?
Could I ask, Joel, one of the things we've been doing the past years with being designated Tree City, we've been giving a rebate back to homeowners for planting trees. Is it fifty dollars?
Fifty dollars.
And that's been a very successful program. We budget every year a couple thousand dollars a lease on that. So at least we, we've got a little start going.
Right, and this, I meant to say that, that's a great point. I meant to say that. This falls, this little small ordinance I'm proposing, it's got a whole first page as if we have a tree board, and we don't. But I just wanted to put it out there. We're not meeting at a certain time yet. We're not meeting once a month. But it falls right into Tree City USA. It really does. The application would be the same before. We won't use this application until it was actually approved, proposed to be approved, but it falls right into Tree City.
Unfortunately, a lot of the trees that are being asked for in that program are not, like Dennis, they're not very hardy, and they're more landscape trees than substantial trees.
Exactly. You just got to know what you're putting where. And this is, this is out in the, in the public area that's going to bring people to Princeton because they're saving these trees, and the proper trees in the right place, taken care of correctly.
How many members do you anticipate having on a tree?
On a, on a tree board, I see five to seven. Get much more than that, it gets long-winded.
All is better.
All is better. I'd be happy to try, but that's...
Five sounds like a good number.
I think five's a good number. And I'd be willing to help initiate it, get some things started, obviously I want to get some things started, and then be there more as an advisory position and get other people involved in it.
Well, I'm all, I'm all for the, you know, we've talked about this in the past, I'm all for the tree board, we just need some, some names of people that would be interested in saying on it.
Totally agree.
Because it's nothing that, we can, we can set that off early, so. Like at the next meeting, if we have the names.
No pressure, there you go. Oh, it's good. By the time the next meeting comes around, I might have another portion of this out there available. I don't know if we'll make it next meeting or not. But the only tree not growing is the one you don't plant. We got to get started. Anything else? Thanks for your time. Thanks. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, Dennis. Next up is Rex Lasson. Rex, you just need for your state of need for the record.
Rex Lasson. Hopefully a quick one here. With respect to the corner of Boyd and South Main, the city's been doing a great job converting these entrances to our sidewalks over the last several years. And anyway, there's one that looks a little bit fretterous. The first page shows the entrances both at the corner of Park Avenue West, or one at the H.B. Wilkinson, and the other at the museum. And those are nice, plain, wide, but the design of the one on page two is the one I'm really concerned about. I think it's a liability issue. And I'm sure it's probably got the right width, although it seems narrow. I drive a, I ride a trike, three-wheeler, and so when I come up, it's kind of like the size of a wheelchair. That's when I first came up, I said, "Boy, this thing's tough to maneuver." Come up the thing, and then you've got to do these quick turns because the, on the bottom picture of the second page, this arm of the sidewalk that goes straight ahead goes to someone's home. So no one's really on that unless they're walking typically. But the sidewalks coming into the corner are kind of broken off by how the design of the ramp was. And these ramps on this one are the same height on the left and right rails coming up, about four inches each. So very simple to run into by accident, especially kids running around. I've seen nothing else like it. I don't think it meets any kind of handicap code, and this thing probably needs to be totally redone to match something like on the first page. And probably, no question, I would think it's a liability for the city if somebody injures themselves, so. And they've done a great job with this stuff, they really have. All the work it takes, there's a lot of detail, et cetera. But I wanted to bring that to your attention because it's just, it's just not right. I have to look up to Rex Brady, who worked on LCN for plus twenty years, was involved with a lot of that with respect to door closures. So anyway, what I'm asking for is somebody take the ball and run with it, make the right calls, and follow up, I'd like a little follow up to me. My name's on there with my phone number and email address. Boy, these things stink to talk through. And, and I'd appreciate it. So could there be a go-to person?
We'll go look at her.
That was an IDOP project, Dean.
Yeah, that was an IDOP.
Thank God.
So we can quite understand that.
Thank you, sir.
I'd have to, no, I'm just IDOP.
Okay. And your name?
Uh, Dean Druckey. Dean Twichamlin, the city engineer.
Okay, I appreciate that. Call me anytime. Just give me a bit of appreciation, so. Is there one other thing? Is there a Halloween this year in Princeton?
Well, we have not, you know, it's not a, you know, the city doesn't put Halloween on per se. It's a, we set the hours in the past. It's not a government, you know, directed holiday.
The municipalities in Illinois are requesting IML, which is the Illinois Municipal League, to get some direction from the governor on this topic. Because right now there aren't any guidelines. So hopefully there's a couple weeks.
Great to hear, because the west side of Park Avenue, we're going to have it, and everyone's invited like they all every year. And hope we have it, the governor wanting it or not. So just thought I'd ask. Thanks, everybody.
I'm going to take the bus. You can hear me, but I'll stand up here. So we've been doing the Princeton City Manager Beautification Award. So this one here, I will say we've had multiple nominations for this person. So I wanted to read a nomination that I got from one of them, word for word, as she put it. I would like to nominate Ray Mabry for the City of Princeton City Manager Beautification Award. Ray volunteers each year to care for the flower pots on Main Street. He deadheads them, weeds them, waters them, and ensures that they stay beautiful and grow to their loveliest potential. And in true Ray fashion, he does it all with a smile. He's an incredible asset to our community. I once asked him at 5:30 in the morning on Main Street, and when I asked him why he was up so early, he said, he simply replied, "I'm looking for things that need to be done." And it doesn't matter what the season is, he finds things that need to be done in the community. In the fall, he blows the leaves off Main Street, off the sidewalks. In the winter, you can see him out shoveling snow off Main Street sidewalks to ensure that there's a clear, safe path for customers to access the local businesses. So on behalf of the residents in the city, I'd like to thank Ray for his commitment to the city beautification and presenting with your call.
Thank you.
Would you like to say something?
I think I should get a real job one of these days. You know, your life experience has taken you to a lot of places, and what we find is, like with Joel and I, we grew up in Princeton, and as well as other people did, and we had a snapshot of what our downtown looked like as kids. I can remember Joel's dad being on the council, and their council was very active in projects, and they did the Utah Mall, and I can still hear Dwayne Querham talk about how they did a lot of hands-on things. But the whole point is, we want our downtown to look vibrant, and I think by pulling a few weeds and planting a few flowers, I think it's all part of the basics of it. So I appreciate that, and if I didn't do this, I'd have to take up golf with John Iserson. So I, so anyway, thank you very much, whoever nominated me. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. I'd add, I'd add to that, that, you know, Ray's, Ray's award on Main Street, he's been doing, he's been doing for the last, you know, several years. And it's not because he sits on the city council and he doesn't, he does it all period of love of the city and, and, you know, volunteerism, and volunteerism and it's best. So the flowers of this year, you know, he always does a great job with these flowers, but I think he really outdone himself this year. They are, they are really... Thank you. Any public comment from the gallery?
Yeah.
Just need for you to come up, just your name right now for the record.
Rick Brooks. I followed up, it's good to follow up with Dennis's talk on the trees because I got the notice some of you may have today of the availability of anywhere between thirty-five hundred and twenty thousand dollars to do tree inventories and tree management in communities. And it's, it's a request for proposals through the state DNR, but it's managed by the Morton Arboretum. And it's a great opportunity to help fund some of the stuff that Dennis was talking about. I've been really a fan of doing a tree inventory, so you have a systematic way to, to address the, some of the issues that he brought up. And as part of the research for this, the problem with it is the deadline is September the 25th. It doesn't, I've seen the application for the funds. It, it makes sense to me for the city to apply, even if you don't get it. You go through the exercise to say, how can we find the resources to fund some of the things that are required? A tree inventory is not that difficult to do. In a matter of twenty minutes, I came up with the entire urban forestry toolkit, which is put out through the Vibrant Cities Lab. Nationally, it has lists of resources, of step-by-step, how do you do a tree inventory and manage your forest cover in a city. It's, I've seen lots of toolkits, and this is really brilliantly done. It's, it's something that could help tremendously come up with everything from building consensus in the community to identifying the main problems, and how do you organize support, and how do you set criteria. It's very, very thorough. So this is an early resource. And I also did a, got a report, I have some copies of, of communities that have gone through a commitment that Dennis was talking about, and that this, this grant would support. Grand Rapids is a good example. Here's a urban forest report card that they put out annually. It's very nicely done. It shows you why trees and how they're important to a community, some of the conflicts that might come up, but also ways to deal with questions and prioritizing which trees you save, and how you, how you essentially set yourselves up for a long-term plan that meets immediate needs and everybody's desire for a greener community with long-term needs and costs. So I guess I would like to encourage the city, and I'd be glad to help. I know I have some students and an intern who are willing to at least attempt to put together a proposal, a draft proposal for this. There is tomorrow a webinar where they tell you how to propose, and generally, that's very, very helpful, and you can find out whether you have even a prayer of being funded. The beauty of being a part of a proposal like this is that you get to know who else is doing it, and who comparable, is comparable to Princeton, what are some of the problems and success stories that we can turn to. And so I strongly encourage the city to pursue this. I'd be willing to help and muster some resources to put together at least a draft of a proposal. I know the turnaround is short, but we'll find out tomorrow, the webinar on how to propose, whether it's worth pursuing, and even if it's not funded, what kinds of positive outcomes could result. So again, it's the Morton Arboretum, the funding, the request for proposals came from the Department of Natural Resources, Chicago Region Trees Initiative, and the Department of Agriculture. And it's rare to have something come up this timely with, with something like what Dennis was talking to you about. One final asset to the proposal that I would suggest is that there be a team of people who work together on the inventory. And actually, I've talked to Taylors in the past about this. Having certified arborists in charge is absolutely important. It's also very valuable to have young people and people of all backgrounds involved. It's a great STEM science learning opportunity. It has been proven around the country, high school students and volunteers can do a tree inventory that is education for them, it builds their commitment, and it builds support. And in the end, when young people come and say, "We have now counted X number of thousands of trees, and here's what we have learned about them." And they do it under the direction of certified arborists or with their collaboration. It's a service to everybody in the community. So anyway, I just want to, I was happy to share this documentation with you, what I learned. And if it's at all possible to pursue this, I'd be willing to muster some resources. I've got a university student and some high school students who are actually, are very interested in working with us. So that's what I had to say. Thanks.
Can you follow up with Teresa?
Sure, happy to. Thanks.
Thanks, Rick. Any other public comment? Okay, we'll go ahead and open a public hearing on the commitment of local funds towards a community development block grant for Marion Street sanitary sewer replacement, replacement. So just state your name for the record.
Emily Byrne, I'm the grant writer for North Central Illinois Council of Government. And the city of Princeton is submitting an application for a public infrastructure grant under the Community Development Block Grant. The grant request is in an amount of $389,631 to be used to restore sanitary sewers on East Marion Street that runs from South Euclid to Fifth Street. The city of Princeton will contribute $10,000 from the city's water and sewer fund towards the completion of the project as well. The project includes the replacement of the sanitary sewer line and manhole replacement on East Marion Street. The purpose of the project is to eliminate infiltration into the sanitary sewer lines, which occurs during heavy rains and has caused basement backups of sanitary sewers. This area has clay tile sewers that are in poor condition and allow infiltration into the system. Video recording was done in June of 2019, and it shows cracked and broken tiles, broken joints, infiltration of tree roots causing further cracking of the tile, and then allowing more infiltration into the system. Broken tiles and root infiltration cause obstructions and assist in causing the backups. No city residents will be displaced as a result of the project. The city has on file anti-displacement and relocation assistance plan. There is a total of fifteen million available for distribution in the September 30th, 2020 public infrastructure funding round. The maximum amount available per community construction is 550,000. Chamlin and associates, consulting engineers, have completed design, specifications, and plans for the project. No permit is required from the IEPA for this project because it's in kind replacement at the same location of the existing system. Funds for the Illinois Community Development Block Grant Program are granted to the state from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. The Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity then distributes the funds throughout Illinois. The funds dispersed by the state must reach, meet the national goal of benefiting 51% low to moderate income individuals. Last, yeah, it was around last summer, there was an income survey that was conducted for the area to determine the project benefit area would meet this standard. The survey results were then analyzed by us. The results indicated that the project benefit exceeds the LMI goal, showing an LMI benefit of 54.54%. So of the $389,631 of CDVG funds, 212,000 will directly benefit low to moderate income individuals. The next item for discussion is the Community Housing and Development Needs List. The city maintains a ten-year list of capital improvements needed, that are updated year to year. The following list is a partial list of projects, not including this one, and it totals in roughly around thirteen million. And I'll read through the list here. On store and sanitary, we have wastewater treatment plant upgrades of two million, sanitary lift stations, four total, 600,000, a work truck, 40,000, sewer lining replacement, 1.5 million dollars, and continued system upgrades, which is 60,000 dollars. Then we have water, water... Then we have water, water meter replacement, which is eight hundred thousand, six street water main extension, one million, north water main looping, nine hundred and twelve thousand dollars, well rehabilitation, two hundred thousand, green croft water main replacement, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And for streets, we have residential street maintenance, which is around three million, depot pleasant, West Long Street and Bi- Centennial Drive Street improvement, which is three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, brick street curb replacement, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, sidewalk construction and replacement, one hundred and fifty thousand, parking lot improvements, four hundred and fifty thousand, garbage truck, one hundred and sixty thousand, work truck, forty thousand. For buildings, we have city hall improvements, three hundred thousand, old water treatment plant demolition, which is a hundred thousand. And then left is the city vehicle fleet, and we have a fire engine, that's seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and police cars, four in total of a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Is there anything to add or take off?
Big anxiety.
It's a lot of them.
Rick? Well, I'm sure we can find.
Yeah. Okay. Are there any questions?
So, the grant on Marion Street, so when is that due?
It's due September thirtieth.
And when is the anticipated date that those grants would be awarded that we would find out if these were successful or not?
Is it in January? January? Is that when we'll find out?
Well, we attempted this two years, was it two years ago?
Last year.
Last year.
Well, last year, okay. Well, it's definitely a worthy project in that area, so. Press on and see if they're successful.
Here's a question in the back.
Is that project for the sanitary and the storm sewer on that structure street?
There aren't any san, we don't have storm sewers there along that street. We don't have any storm sewers at all.
This grant portion is for sanitary only, because the storm sewer is not eligible as part of this grant.
Any other questions? And that's all I have.
Thank you, Emily.
And the financials? Can you just throw it out and we can send it back to you, I don't need it.
Oh, okay.
That works for you.
Okay.
All right.
Rick, any, let's all get another comment. Go ahead and close the public hearing, and we'll go on to any additional, we don't have any more comments. We'll go to Commissioner Newman for approval of minutes.
I move that we approve the minutes from our regular council meeting on August seventeenth, twenty-twenty. I'll second that.
Motion's been seconded. Comments?
Councilmember Mabry.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querem.
Aye. We'll go to approval invoices and city clerk's office.
In the Department of Accounts and Finances, for this period, we have invoices totaling seventy-four thousand, two hundred and twenty-three dollars and eight cents. In the Department of Streets and Public Improvements, we have invoices totaling one hundred twenty-four thousand, eight hundred sixty-six dollars and fifty-four cents. In the Department of Public Safety, we have invoices totaling one hundred seventy-one thousand, two hundred and nine dollars and forty-nine cents. And in the Department of Public Property and Utilities, we have invoices totaling four hundred fifty-five thousand, one hundred fifty-seven dollars and ninety-seven cents. Mayor, all council members present have confirmed their reviews of all invoices, and now we're submitted for disposition.
I move that we approve the invoices as presented.
I'll second that.
Motion's been seconded. Comments? Call roll.
Councilmember Mabry.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querem.
Aye. Now, we'll go to regular business and city clerk's office.
Next on the agenda is the second and final reading of ordinance O dash twenty dash O one one. This is an ordinance amending the city personnel manual, adding a credit card use policy. Mayor, all council members have reviewed this ordinance, and it is submitted for disposition.
I move that we approve ordinance O dash two zero dash zero one two.
I'll second that.
Motion's been seconded. Comments? Call roll.
Councilmember Mabry.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querem.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is ordinance O dash twenty dash O one two. This is a, an ordinance amending the city purchasing manual, establishing authority thresholds, et cetera. Mayor, all council members have reviewed this ordinance, and it is submitted for disposition.
I move that we approve ordinance O dash two zero dash zero one two.
I'll second that.
Motion's been seconded. Comments? Call roll.
Councilmember Mabry.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querem.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is resolution R dash twenty dash O two three. This is a resolution entering into an agreement for application services for a community development block grant with North Central Illinois Council of Governments, associated with the Marion Street Sewer Replacement Project. Mayor, all council members have reviewed this resolution, and it is submitted for disposition.
I move that we approve resolution R dash two zero dash zero two three.
I'll second that.
Motion's been seconded. Comments? Call roll.
Councilmember Mabry.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querem.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is resolution R dash twenty dash O two four. This is a resolution authorizing the city manager to seek favorable terms on funding associated with the Thompson Street Relief Sewer. Mayor, all council members have reviewed this resolution, and it is submitted for disposition.
I move that we approve resolution R dash two zero dash zero two four.
I'll second that.
Uh, motion's been seconded. I would just add to this, this is a project that we've been wanting to complete, and that is adding a sanitary sewer line from Fifth Street to Sixth Street along Thompson and connecting it with a line that runs out to our detention pond, and is thinking that this is the, this is a solution to people receiving backup in their basement, because it eliminates a ninety-degree turn at that intersection that can only go north, and it meets water coming off of Marion Street that's coming down Fifth Street and has to make a turn to the ninety-degree turn to go out to Sixth Street from that spot. So, this should be, this overflow system, I think, will eliminate a great deal of the havoc that we get with heavy rains and backup in people's basement. I think this is a, this is a great solution. Teresa?
I'm looking at Jane's.
Point is here, so if anybody has any questions, any...
I guess I'll note one thing with the cost that we have on the projects here, council has all got the spreadsheet. We're trying to make this as affordable as possible from fiscal year to fiscal year, so we've tried to pull some of the street repairs pulled out for the next fiscal year, and we can try to be a little bit more creative with that. Right now, we'll just focus on the relief sewer at this point, so.
Yeah, so this, you know, coming back, you know, letting this settle, once it's in, it's going to be ground, well, letting that settle, it settles through the winter, just like we did on South Church and on the Bailey subdivision is not an ideal situation, but it's the right way to do this project and get everything settled properly, then we can utilize, you know, our street tax referendum money and possible MFT funds as well next year in the spring to pay Thompson Street and get that all taken care of.
I could, Dean, two things. So, we talked a little bit briefly before the meeting that ideally, it'd be nice to have a sidewalk eventually on one side of that street if at all possible, so as they're doing their final engineering and start thinking about that, whether, again, we're not putting it in now, but down the road, it'd be nice to be able to figure a sidewalk on the south side. We can talk more about that, but also, did the Illinois EPA give you your permit now for this project, are you moving forward, so if you get the funding in place, you're ready to actually let out bids in this fall, right?
Uh, yes. The EPA permit has been submitted. We do not have it back as of yet, but we anticipate having that for a fall bid.
Okay, great.
Yes.
Very good.
And basically, what like Mayor Querem was saying, this eliminates a large portion of that sewer that now has to go north and a ninety-degree bend limits about a half a mile of flow. It makes a more direct connection to the twenty-four inch sewer that goes to the excess flow again. So, during major events, you see the flows in that lift station go from about three hundred eighty-five thousand gallons to one point six million. So, it's just, it's too much. And this will, it's called a relief sewer, it does exactly that. So, it should help tremendously.
Yeah, that's, you know, that water, we looked at the annual cover of that last September, and the water was all the way at the street level, and that sewer line is down about six feet, that ninety-degree that goes to the north. And, you know, all that water can't get through that pipe, and that's why we get all that backup. So, this will release it all to the, you know, to get that line that goes out to the, down to the pond, so.
So, some of the pumps that we placed on Thompson Street and all that may be eliminated if, once this is in and it's working successfully.
Yes, I'll bring relief to allow them to catch up and take that flow, like I said, more direct route to the excess flow than that water. It makes it there, but not before it surcharges the sewer and causes basement backups and even all the way back into church, I believe. That is part of the issue that happened with church treatment. Comes over High Point and flows south to Fletcher area, and that's also where we leave some of that problem.
Good. Any other comments? Motion has been seconded. Call roll.
Councilmember Mabry.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querem. Next on the agenda is grain storage bids. I'll tell you that the city did advertise for, for bids for the occupation of two storage grain bins on city property. We received two bids that came back identically the same. So, we're hurling it over the fence to the council to decide what do you want to do about that.
I'm gonna warm it up to you guys.
One of the things I know, Pete, we had some expenses on bidding that out, so we had roughly a hundred and sixty dollars for some advertising costs, so if we wanted to go ahead and rebid it out, that's a possibility, right? That'd be one option. So, we're gonna have another hundred and sixty, two hundred dollars invested in that option, with the hopes that we'd have those two bidders and maybe a third bidder, whoever, we don't know that for a fact, we have no bidders on a second time around, so. So, that's one option, right? And then what, what other options are out there? Flipping the coin?
Well, they are drawing a name out of hand or something, you know, that's, you know, and I think, you know, to your point, I think that, you know, rebidding and putting up for bids again is probably the fairest way to go about it. I, you know, I don't know if drawing a name out of the hand or, you know, drawing straws is the way to do it.
So, Pete, you have two, two people responded to the bids?
Two people. Yep.
I think if we do send it out, we bid, and we'll see what the response is, and hopefully, you know, we'll have some differences in both the bids, or actually being able to get another. Not, I don't know.
So, if we did go to rebidding, then Pete, based on timeframe, what would be the quickest? That would be in the paper and then the bids would be resubmitted by anybody that wanted to do it. We're looking at maybe a bid letting by the first of October, so people in the farming in the street can be ready to plan accordingly.
We could, we could have it in the paper this Saturday. Um, I think I actually had a two-week window on that. We could probably shorten that up, Pat. Um, it might be a little optimistic that it'd be ready for the next meeting, but it might be.
So, these two bidders will know that they had the exact same price on their first bid, and here they're seeing another request for another, a second bid. Our guess is that somebody's gonna mount a private bid.
That's the assumption.
Yeah. I think it's worth a try.
I think that's the fairest way to do it, is rebid it.
And then if it's identical, then I think maybe a name and a hat might be the way to go.
One of the bidders is in the audience, I don't know if you have any questions for him or not.
I don't know.
Or does the man have any questions for us?
Uh, I don't, I don't know that I have any questions other than the timing, putting it back out for bids, gonna start to push fast when we need the storage. Means they're turning, I know one farmer's, we're still probably two weeks from combining, but somebody's already going yesterday.
Yeah, that's a concern.
So, we just fast-track repeat, we get the ad as soon as possible and...
Do you have an idea how short a window we would have to bid by?
Uh, I don't think there's any timeframe. I think you can do it as quickly as you can get in the paper.
Okay. So, generally, what we can't do is go back to those two bidders and say, your bids are identical, we need you to submit a second bid?
Well, I, I think if you don't accept either one of them, you need to reject them, and then you don't have anything for you, so you need to rebid them.
All right. That's interesting.
And we could, we could push it, is that there could also be a special meeting specifically for, for these bids to be able to do that, so we won't have to raise one.
But we could approve quicker than two weeks if we need to.
Well, that hardly gives you any time to get any bids in, so.
Well, if it's in the paper on Saturday, closing it on the following Wednesday would be a little too short, I'm thinking.
Yes.
Think we can get away with a week?
Yeah.
Okay, so then you could have a special meeting on Monday.
You could have a bid opening petition for the regular meeting.
Could do that.
So, you're talking a week from tonight, or Monday night?
Two weeks from yesterday.
Two weeks from yesterday.
Yeah, that'd be the regular meeting.
That's the next meeting.
The bidders are probably looking at slight modifications to their packet, so...
What's that?
That's that the bidders are looking at probably slight modifications to their packet, so I wouldn't think it would be too much to...
Right, possibly.
At least that gets you to the twenty-first, so if you order the bids in, it's not as soon as mail, it would probably like, but it's better than October first, probably.
Well, we can make it just a one-week bid.
Well, it's not new, you know, it's not like they have to do a lot of research to find out what they're bidding on.
Right.
Yeah, I think we'll see the subtraction.
So, I guess, like John says, we'll have to reject the bids, if you'd like to reject them.
I can make a motion and we reject the two bids. Would that, would that be appropriate?
Yep.
I move that we reject the two bids received for the grain bid, grain storage bids.
I'll second that.
Motion's been seconded. Call roll.
Councilmember Mabry.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querem.
Aye.
Thank you, Pete. I'll go to city manager report.
Uh, in your packet, you have a slight catch-up on the police pension reports made in July. Um, and then we also have the firefighter pension report in there as well. Um, and then you also have the monthly financial report for June twenty-twenty, which I was going to probably address a little bit more, but then I just got what I gave you, the July twenty-twenty financial report, so it's been a catch-up month for some of this stuff. So, the July twenty-twenty monthly report, I made copies for you, but I have my chicken scratch on it, I'm sorry. Um, we're right about where we need to be in terms of, as you'll see my notes as you go through here, stars on the bottom of the second page there, which should be about twenty, twenty-five percent. We're, we're right there. Um, if you go to page three, I'm expecting some changes on garbage and some of that, those types of fees, recycling that, coming out of that, but because of what we just disclosed before, so, um, we're gonna, I'm gonna keep an eye on that one. There's gonna be some fluctuations there. So, right now, revenues are outpacing the expenses, but that's gonna, it's gonna change, so. Um, on page four, you'll see another number that seems to be a little bit out of whack, and that's our motor fuel tax, because it's gonna be over what we had budgeted in terms of revenue. So, um, it's a, it's a good problem, but that one does kinda stand out there. Uh, if you wanna go back to the charts here, on page eight, I do wanna note, when Laura Bach has these put together on June and July, we don't have the numbers for sales tax yet, so I don't want anybody to get confused on that chart. So, FATE hasn't released those, I'm not quite sure what those numbers exactly are. Um, but you'll see, as we reported March, April, and May, those numbers are higher than the last year, as you can see the comparison there. So, just, I just struck out June and July, because we don't have those yet. Um, on the next page, you see the, and this is an interesting one, our hotel motel tax revenue, in correspondence with the Chamber, to try and make sure that we're on the same page as tourism dollars. We have a meeting tomorrow morning to go over it. Um, in April, we saw that huge dip. Um, in April, we saw that huge dip, but we were still surprised that we were getting something. Um, then you see May and June, and it's starting to tick up again. So that's a good sign, I looked at the balances today, and we're actually, we're, we're doing okay in that fund, so, um, hopefully that's a good sign. Um, let's see here, let me go back to the last page. Um, we, we do have the, the bucom calls for, uh, fire and police activity. Uh, I made a note on my other spreadsheet here. Um, in May, there was a little over forty-eight hundred calls. And then in, uh, let's see here, six, three of twenty twenty, it started to go off, so we started to hit fifty-six hundred calls. Now we're hitting fifty-eight hundred, so we're starting to see, there was a dip in calls, I think you'd probably agree at this time. Um, and Chuck, as I talked to him, there was a dip during COVID, now it's starting to come back up. August calls will probably be significant. So, um, it's just something to kind of keep an eye on, you're seeing, uh, their activity really pick back up, so. Any questions on the financials there? In terms of, and I'll say, in terms of what we're going through, and what we went through since the beginning of the fiscal year, I, I feel better. Until I hear the list of projects, she, she just scrambled off, so, um, but, uh, we're, we're, we're okay. Um, but there's a lot of unknowns, so that's what I'm trying to keep in mind right now, the storm hit. We got a lot of expenses out there that we won't know until prior to next month or so, so try and keep that in mind.
Thanks, Teresa, that kind of leads me into what I want to talk about. It's not a popular decision, but it's a, uh, I don't think it's gonna be a popular decision, but I think it's, uh, a prudent thing to do. You know, in the spring, we hit COVID, and we, uh, we, uh, canceled our, uh, May cleanup week, first and second week of, uh, May. You know, we do that every year. And so we said we were going to, uh, uh, move it to the first two weeks of October. But, uh, you know, we've had some issues that have come up, um, you know, the storm, COVID-related and so on, that it's really put the strain on, not necessarily a strain, but you know, it's, as Teresa mentioned, there's a lot of uncertainty going forward. So last year, Republic billed us eighty-three hundred and forty-two dollars for the two weeks of cleanup. That was three hundred and thirty-nine tons of trash. Uh, we had five trucks running along with an inloader, and the fuel costs were roughly about thirteen hundred dollars for the two weeks. So we're likely looking at at least a ten thousand dollar expense if we were to hold two cleanup weeks this year. We don't yet know the cost to the city for the storm we had four weeks ago. It's anticipated that the street department alone could incur upwards of fifty thousand dollars. It doesn't appear that FEMA will be involved. They require nineteen point four million dollars in total storm damage throughout the state for them to provide financial assistance to anyone. Teresa and I met with Senator Chuck Weaver and State Representative Dan Swanson a couple of weeks ago, along with Bureau County Emergency Keenan Campbell. Uh, at that time, the likelihood of that figure being reached was very low, we've heard nothing new in that area since. Uh, with the un, yet unknown cost of the storm cleanup in the city, it's not, in my opinion, a wise financial decision to hold two week, citywide cleanup this year, uh, particularly because it's not something that, uh, you know, we do it for the benefit of the residents. Um, it's not something that's mandatory. Uh, a lot of communities don't even hold these cleanups for their communities, but we're gonna continue to do it. And just, uh, at this point this year, cancellation seems to be the right thing to do. Uh, in addition, in addition to the financial concerns, uh, the storm pushed the city's street work back four weeks. Uh, they're still picking up rush from the storm this week. Cleanup will be pushed back in addition of two weeks if we have this cleanup. Uh, so you're talking about a total of six weeks of, uh, of work that would be pushed back if we have the cleanup. Uh, examples of work that needs to be done, you know, they've been working on curbs on North Vernon, uh, they've got catch basin repairs they wanna do this fall. They're painting the lines for the bike lanes and the signage, there's parking lot signs that are being made, they're replacing damaged signs as well around town. Um, and then just their regular, their regular duties, uh, regular brush pickup. Um, the COVID uncertainty heading into the fall and winter, you know, you read the paper, you read what the state, it doesn't have anything to do with the city, it's what the state does. If the state comes out and they mandate another shutdown, you know, we don't know how that's going to affect us. We may not fare as well in a second shutdown than we did in the first shutdown, it's an uncertainty, it's an unknown. So we ju, we just don't know. Um, so again, I think the prudent thing for us to do is to cancel the cleanup week. Now, residents, um, can still take whatever they have out to the transfer station. And, you know, it's, it's a very, very affordable option. You know, it's two dollars and fifty cents per fifty, fifty pounds of, uh, stuff you take out there. It's two dollars and fifty cents for fifty pounds. It's forty-seven dollars a ton. You know, a typical sofa that you take out there, it's four bucks, we get rid of it. Um, and these are Princeton only, these are Princeton resident only rates. Uh, we'll do the cleanup, it's, we're gonna do it, and it's a great project that we do every year, but we wanna wait, I think best to wait till our next budget year, which will, it would be after May first of, uh, twenty twenty-one. So I'll open it up for comments. Anybody else have any?
I could, um, uh, Mayor, the, at first I was thinking we really should push forward with the cleanup, but I, I really understand where we're coming from. I think about the street department, the, uh, first line of defense, uh, in many ways for flooding is the catch basins we have. And even though that's, that's stormwater, at the end of a heavy rain, stormwater and sewer water sometimes are the same entity. So I would just say that, um, if they can continue to focus on their catch basins, they continue to work on things that need to get done, I would agree with foregoing that. The other thing is, with electronic recycling coming up here, they can, the residents can get rid of those, uh, old electronics that they wouldn't be able to get much rid of anyway during our cleanup, but that will help get rid of some blighted things. It seems like residents like to put their microwaves and TVs out by the alley, and I don't know why they do that, because there, no one's gonna pick those up, and they just sit there all summer long. So we can encourage those residents to take those to the electronic recycling center. And then the other thing is, if you've got an old sofa or mattress, you can come get us a few extra tags, and the city actually, with the proper tags on there, the, the waste tags, will pick up that sofa right there in front of your doorstep. But if, if you don't put the tags on, we're, you know, we just need a little help there from your, your perspective, so. I think if we just forego it for all those multitude of reasons, and encourage the residents to come buy a few tags, if they got that sofa that needs to go down the road, that they can't physically get out to the, the transfer station, the city will come pick that up with the proper tags. And Pete, did you help your Teresa, how many tags do they take to pick up a sofa? Is it, is it eight dollars worth, or?
Uh, it's probably three or four.
So, and they're two bucks a tag, right?
I think they're, they're only a dollar, they're a dollar a tag.
It's two dollar a tag. Usually eight bucks a sofa for, for stickers.
So there's alternatives there, so, and that's my thinking is, we'll just forego it at this point.
I agree, I think, uh, we can, we should leave our cash reserves as they are, and not spend something on an unnecessary event that we can redo, revisit next year. I, I think you're right, and I would hate to see our street department lose another couple of weeks of productivity because they're doing cleanup. Just doesn't make sense to me, so I think it's the wisest choice.
Yeah, and that two weeks, you know, they're using, they're using all their guys, you know, they're using five guys, six guys, they're, they're using all their trucks, they're using the in-overs, so it's not, you know, that's two solid weeks, that's pretty much not, not much else to give you up.
And snow's coming. The window's closing.
You know, one thing we could do during the electronic recycling event is maybe do a flyer that has these prices. You know, if you have some jump, you know, jump basin handles, here's your options for costs if you wanna take it out, this is what the costs are. City has tags, this is what they are.
I think the idea with the tags, I think a lot of people may not even be aware that, come and buy some tags, and you can put a sofa on the curb.
So you need, uh, like, four tags for a sofa?
Mm-hmm.
For two dollars a piece?
And you actually haul it away, then?
Mm-hmm.
That's a bargain.
It is a bargain.
Out there for a month gaining weight, so that's a bargain.
Is the tag based on size or weight or?
No, just, you just look at the sofa, just put four tags on, if it's real small, you know, yeah, put two, three, you know, it's just...
A little see, yeah.
One sticker, yeah, just...
As far as how quickly can you put out, uh, the list out, um, either social media or the something, those that don't have the social media, probably want it somewhere in the...
Kevin's gonna get it in the paper.
Get it in the papers.
The public first?
We put something together, though, get it out.
We'll get it out, we, we got plenty of time, we got good solid three weeks.
Yeah, and just a reminder, electronic recycling, September nineteenth, eight to eleven, at the transfer station, so. You will have to show ID for proof of residency.
I think the utility bill entered.
Utility bill, yeah.
And they will not take anything that has freon, so air conditioners, dehumidifiers are, are, they will not take. And I talked to Republic, said I have a dehumidifier I'd like to get rid of, and no one has any idea what to do with any that has freon in it. So I'm still searching.
All right, that's all I have, do we have any old business tonight? Any new business? Any public comment? Okay, I entertain a motion to adjourn our meeting.
I move that we adjourn our meeting this evening, reconvene for our next meeting on Monday, September twenty-first, twenty twenty, seven o'clock at City Hall. Uh, changes in meeting format and allocation, although, um, attended at City Hall will be announced in advance.
I'll second that.
Motion's been seconded, call roll.
Councilmember Mabry.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querem.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned, thank you all for coming.